Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. We will be going into a brief executive session at the conclusion of the public meeting, but we will not reconvene in a public meeting after the executive session. I would like to read the following notice into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public and the Board welcomes the interests of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. I'd like now to request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry. Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting this public session of this afternoon's meeting live on Cable Channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this meeting will also be available as a podcast within 24 hours on the CUNY website. On behalf of the Board, I would like to warmly welcome newly appointed trustee Brian Oberfell, who is a senior partner at the law firm of Emmett Marvin &amp; Martin and who has a deep, lifelong commitment to education. Congratulations, trustee Oberfell, on your unanimous confirmation by the New York Senate. We look forward to working with you. We've been in touch with our colleague, former trustee Sam Sutton, to thank him for his dedicated service to the university. I would also like to offer the congratulations to the Board, to Dr. Terrence Martell, who has been elected as Chair of the University Faculty Senate, and as such is our new trustee representing the faculty. Dr. Martell is the Director of the Weissman Center for International Business at Baruch College, where he is also the Saks Distinguished Professor of Finance. Welcome to you, Terrence. We look forward to working with you. We know Dr. Martell well, from his membership on the Board's Committee on Fiscal Affairs, the Subcommittee on Investment, and the Subcommittee on Audit. Dr. Cooper, would you like to say a few words of introduction for Mr. Martell?
Well, you took most of the words out of my mouth, so what's the point of repeating? Terrence Martell has served as Vice Chair of the University Faculty Senate for the past two years. He has been devoted, hardworking, and brought to the Senate a position and a point of view that was not available before. I am delighted to pass this job on to him. You have no idea how happy this makes me, and good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sure you are.
Thank you, Sandy. Congratulations to trustee Rita DiMartino, who recently received the Global Spanish-Latino Awards, 2012 Lifetime Achievement Award for Individuals of Puerto Rican Descent. And I'd like to congratulate CUNY Law School Associate Dean Mary Lou Billick, who was recently named as the new top administrator of the UMass School of Law at Dartmouth. This took place just a few months after former associate dean Penelope Andrews accepted the leadership of the Albany Law School. It appears that the CUNY School of Law has become a launching pad for law school deans. I take this as yet another example of CUNY Law School's recent success. The Board held its Bronx Borough hearing on Monday, June 18th, 2012. Board Chairperson Phil Berry chaired the meeting. That was also attended by trustees Hugo Morales, Kafue Kuaku, and Sandy Cooper, members of the Chancellery and the Bronx College Presidents or their representatives. A summary of the proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and the Chancellor's Cabinet, and a transcript of that hearing is available in the office of the Secretary. I want to extend our deepest condolences to the family of Dr. Richard Trent, who passed away on June 9th. A World War II veteran, Richard received his doctorate from Columbia University in 1955. He was the founding president of Medgar Evers College and served from March 1970 to October 1982. He returned to teaching at Brooklyn College after his retirement. He will be deeply missed. Now may I call on trustee Rita DiMartino for a resolution.
This is a resolution of appreciation for Dr. Eduardo Marti. Whereas Dr. Eduardo Marti was named the first CUNY Vice Chancellor for Community Colleges by Chancellor Matthew Goldstein in June 2010 with the unanimous approval of the Board of Trustees, and whereas prior to his appointment as Vice Chancellor for Community Colleges, Dr. Marti joined the City University of New York in July 2000 as President of Queensborough Community College, where he served with the highest distinction overseeing advances in student enrollment, curricular innovation, faculty research, government relations, campus facilities, and fundraising. And whereas Dr. Marti led four community colleges prior to joining the university and has been a consistent and effective advocate for community college education and a leader in developing ways to challenge and support community college students, and whereas Dr. Marti, who left Cuba in 1960 and was the first in his family to achieve a college degree, has been an eloquent and steadfast supporter of CUNY's proud tradition of welcoming and serving immigrants and the children of immigrants. And whereas Dr. Marti was appointed by Mayor Michael Bloomberg to the Department of Education's Panel for Educational Policy in 2011, and appointed by Governor Eliot Spitzer to the New York State Commission on Higher Education in 2007, chairing its Workforce and Economic Development Committee, and whereas Dr. Marti conceived and organized the first national colloquium on community colleges in September 2011, reimagining community colleges, which was attended by more than 50 presidents from 26 states, as well as community college faculty and researchers, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Eduardo Marti for his exemplary dedication and distinguished leadership at the City University of New York.
Hear, hear. I'd like to call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to read a resolution. Since the Eduardo Marti resolution is somewhat controversial, let's take a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions? We still thank you, Eduardo.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say just a word. Today, well, actually Friday will be my last day in CUNY, and it's a wonderful circle because I started in CUNY in 1966 as a faculty member at Board of Manhattan Community College. And it is a wonderful, wonderful way to end a long and very happy career. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Board of Trustees for your confidence, and most of all, I want to thank Chancellor Goldstein for his confidence in me. Thank you.
I'd like to call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution of appreciation for Dr. Tomas Morales. Whereas Dr. Tomas Morales was unanimously named the third president of the College of Staten Island in June 2007, upon recommendation by Chancellor Matthew Goldstein by the Board of Trustees. And whereas during his tenure at the College of Staten Island, Dr. Morales worked tirelessly to enhance the college's mission and reputation by restructuring academic departments and recruiting experienced administrators, advancing the work of the High Performance Computing Center, supporting undergraduate research, overseeing the groundbreaking of a new residence hall, strengthening partnerships with communities and organizations across Staten Island, and coordinating the university's outreach efforts with legislators at the borough and state levels. And whereas Dr. Morales, a nationally prominent educator, whose career spans over 30 years, has demonstrated his deep commitment to public higher education through his outstanding work in senior administrative positions at three largest public university systems in our nation: California State University, the State University of New York, and the City University of New York. And whereas Dr. Morales has taken the leading role in advocating for accessible and high-quality education for all students, serving as board member and co-chair of the National Task Force on College Readiness of the American Association of State Colleges, on the American Council on Education's Commission on Racial and Ethnic Equality, and on the Governing Board and as Secretary of the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. And whereas Dr. Morales was appointed by Mayor Michael Bloomberg to the New York City Panel on Educational Policy and was awarded the Professional Achievement Award in Education from Boracwa College, and whereas Dr. Morales serves as a board member of the Staten Island University Hospital Foundation and has been recognized by several community organizations, receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award in Education from the New York League of Puerto Rican Women, the Effective Leadership Golden Age Award from the Latino Center on Aging, and the Staten Island Chamber of Commerce Lewis Miller Business Leadership Award, among many other significant recognitions, now and therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Morales for his exemplary dedication and distinguished leadership as President of the College of Staten Island.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. I'd like now to call on Vice Chair Phil Berry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is for Dr. Kenneth Olden. Whereas Dr. Kenneth Olden was named the acting and founding dean of the CUNY School of Public Health at Hunter College and the acting dean of the Hunter College Schools of Health Professions in September 2008 by the Board of Trustees. And whereas Dr. Olden worked tirelessly to establish a world-class school of public health, successfully transforming highly regarded university-wide programs in public health into the CUNY School of Public Health at Hunter College, which was granted full accreditation by the Council on Education for Public Health in 2011. And whereas during his tenure, Dr. Olden was instrumental in the planning and execution of the CUNY School of Public Health at Hunter College's move to its current location in East Harlem in 2011, where it shares space with the Silverman School of Social Work at Hunter College, Hunter College's Institute for the Study of Puerto Ricans, and the Hunter College East Harlem Art Gallery. And whereas Dr. Olden recruited renowned scholars to join the CUNY School of Public Health, engaging them to work collaboratively with students, researchers, and community organizations to develop innovative approaches to improving the well-being of urban populations in New York City and beyond. And whereas Dr. Olden is a distinguished researcher who demonstrated a profound commitment to public health during his career as Director of the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences and the National Toxicology Program, the first African-American to become Director of one of the 18 institutes of the National Institutes of Health, and as a member of the Institute of Medicine of the National Academy of Science. And whereas Dr. Olden received the 2011 Richard and Barbara Hanson Leadership Award for his sustained contributions in the field of public health, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Kenneth Olden for his exemplary dedication and distinguished leadership as acting and founding dean of this CUNY School of Public Health.
May I second that? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Ken. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kingsborough Community College is chosen as one of 10 community colleges across the country to take the lead in bridging cultures to form a nation: differences, community, and democratic thinking, a new initiative focused on civic learning through the humanities. Congratulations, Kingsborough. Two Hunter -- Two Hunter College faculty have received significant awards. Silverman School of Social Work professor Deborah Tolman was recognized for her groundbreaking work in gender and media literacy by receiving the 2012 Real Deal Award from Scenarios USA. And CUNY School of Public Health professor Franklin Meyer received the American Industrial Hygiene Association's 2012 Donald E. Cummings Memorial Award. Congratulations to both. Two Queens College faculty have won full-bread scholarships: Comparative Literature professor Andrea Kaylil, to conduct sociopolitical research in Tunisia, and education professor Mathilis Wamba, to develop a master's program in teaching at Malawi, Africa. Congratulations to both. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All seven 2012 Kaplan Educational Foundation Leadership Program Scholars hail from CUNY Community Colleges. They are Goodwin Boful, Kimoni Martin, Ariela Rosa of Bronx Community College, Adonis Billy, Denise Reynoso of Hostos, and Gabriel Flores and Jessina Preocado of Kingsborough. And all seven 2012 Kaplan Scholars are transferring to senior colleges and universities come from our CUNY Community Colleges as well. They are Sharra Concepcion, Ayana Wellington of Bronx Board of Manhattan Community College, Leonardo Minier, and Abdullah Zuku Traorque of Bronx Community College, Mariana Rivera and Enoch Soa of Hostos, and Shakayalana Lawrence of Kingsborough. Congratulations to all of you. Two McCauley Honors College students at Hunter College have received significant rewards: one in chemistry, Senior Patrick Lee, a Fulbright Fellowship for the years 2012-2013, to work as a teaching assistant in Macau, China, and political science major, Semrut Paul Kajor, a Humanity in Action Fellowship to study human rights in Poland this summer. Congratulations to both of you. Queens College 2012 graduate Tara Gildea received a rare Beneki Scholarship to help pay for her graduate studies at Oxford University, where she researched Jane Austen on a McCauley Opportunities Fund last summer. And Queens College Aaron Copland School of Music graduate student Jonathan Springer received a Fulbright Award to study percussion in India for an extended time. Congratulations. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. List of grants and gifts received by the university since our April 30th, 2012, meeting is available on the table and in your calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me echo your words of welcome to trustee Brian Oberfell. We look forward to working with you, Brian, and Terrence Martell. We welcome you as well and look forward to working with the Senate. This is always a joyous and celebratory time of the year. An estimated 47,000 CUNY degrees were conferred during the 2011-2012 academic year: 14,800 associate degrees, 21,500 baccalaureate degrees, and 11,000 graduate degrees. Mr. Chairman, this represents a 37.6% increase since 2001, and during that period of time, as all of you know, the university has worked very hard to increase our standards quite significantly. And those who were naysayers of this reform movement that followed the splendid report that was chaired by our chairman now have something to reflect upon because we've never seen growth of this kind of magnitude in our history, and something that we're all very delighted about. So I want to thank all of the trustees, alumni, and friends who participated in the commencement ceremonies and graduation across the university. The McCauley Honors College, where I attended as an observer, along with Bill McCauley, who has been there every day since the college's inception, were impressed by where our students are going. And let me just mention a partial list because this is something that is, again, a game-changer for this university. We have graduates now going to the Albert Einstein College of Medicine and their joint MD/PhD programs, PhD students going to Berkeley and Cambridge and Columbia University at Columbia, we have students going to their medical school and their law school, the University of Chicago for their law school, Duke University School of Law, Georgetown School of Law, Harvard School of Law, Harvard Medical School, Johns Hopkins, Mount Sinai School of Medicine, PhD programs at Harvard and MIT. We had six or eight students accepted to NYU's law school, and a number are going this year, I believe it's four, PhD programs at the University of Michigan, the University of Texas at Austin, we have students going to Yale School of Medicine, and the list goes on. It's something I think we all are deeply proud of. Others have accepted very coveted invitations to join internship programs at some of the major companies that have their headquarters here in New York City. So on behalf of all who helped these students launch their extraordinary careers, starting with our faculty, staff, and administrators, I thank you for the extraordinary work that you have done to shape these young people and others throughout the university. ASAP and the new community college, I'd just like to give you a quick update. After speaking of realizing potential, the results of our ASAP initiative have been amazing. The 2,500 participants in ASAP to date have a combined three-year graduation rate of 56%. By way of comparison, a similar group of CUNY students and comparable data nationally, the number is about 23%. Just this month --
Do you hear that? 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 Do you hear that?
the state for tax incentive support and for capital support. Higher education, business, industry partnerships will be an area of focus for our next iteration. Joining the group of very distinguished people that I'm pleased to be connected with are now Shelley Silver, Speaker Silver, and Senator Martin Golden, and our own trustee Wellington Chen, who was asked by the governor to be part of that council. Tomorrow is the inaugural meeting of the Gov, of Governor Cuomo's new New York Education Reform Commission, the commission comprising education, community, and business leaders from across the state. We will examine the current structure of the state's education system, including teacher recruitment and performance, student achievement, education funding and costs, parent and family engagement, problems facing high-knee districts, and the best use of technology in the classroom. Governor Cuomo continues to look to us to help, and we are very pleased to be asked to be part of that important activity. With respect to the city budget, I provide a testimony on the city's FY 2013 Executive Proposal at a Joint Higher Education and Finance Committee hearing of the city council that took place on May 18th. We continue to discuss the university's budget priorities with both sides of City Hall, and it is expected that the mayor and city council will shake hands on an adopted budget very soon. This coming Thursday, I will travel to Dallas, Texas with Deputy Mayor Bob Steele at the first U.S. News and World Report STEM Solutions 2012. The panel that Bob Steele and myself will conduct is titled "What's Going On in STEM in New York City: Driving Successful Outcomes Through Effective Partnerships." I look forward to highlighting our many citywide initiatives and partnerships. For example, NYU Center for Urban Science and Progress, the New York, New York Structural Biology Center, as well as the progress we have made in CUNY's own decade of science initiatives. For example, strengthening doctoral programs in the sciences, recre, creating professional master's programs, and encouraging undergraduate research. This fall, CUNY will partner again with U.S. News and World Report and the Daily News to host a STEM conference in New York City. Meanwhile, construction is well underway at the site of the CUNY Advanced Science Research Center on the City College Campus. And with the leadership of Vice Chancellor Gillian Small, we are actively recruiting top faculty to direct each of the areas of FOCI: Photonics, Nanotechnology, Water and Environmental Sensing, Structural Biology, and Neuroscience. We look forward to the opening of the center, which is scheduled for August 2014. With respect to grant activity here at the university, we estimate that total award activity for the university in the current fiscal year will exceed $400 million. Over the past decade, we have seen award volume increase by over thirty-three percent, federal support increase by forty-three percent, and true research activity increase by over fifty-nine percent. With the ASRC and other new and renovated science facilities coming online in the next several years, CUNY should hit the half a billion dollar mark in total award activity within three to five years. Benno, I only reflect about your report that you wrote a dozen years ago and what those numbers are and how they pale with respect to the numbers today. So again, I congratulate our faculty, the ones primarily responsible for this very impressive success that we've achieved, and just encourage them to continue to do the very good work. On the non-research area, some notable grants were also announced very recently. A million-dollar award from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to support the launch of the new CUNY Community College. So I congrat you, congratulate you, President Scott Evanbeck. A one million dollar grant from the Robin Hood Foundation to support the scaling up of the ASAP. Kudos to ASAP Executive Director Donna Lindeman. The Robin Hood Foundation also gave us 1.2 million dollars to support our At Home in College program, which works with over two thousand students in sixty-three schools to help them prepare for a successful transition to college. Kudos to University Director of Collaborative Programs Eric Hoffman and Director of the At Home in College Program Daniel Volokh. And finally, we received another 1.2 million dollars from the Helena Rubenstein Foundation to support the endowment created last year to support continuing education scholarships, bringing that total to over 2.1 million dollars. Congratulations to Associate Dean of Adult and Continuing Education, Suri Deitch. And lastly, I would like to congratulate President Felix Metos Rodriguez for receiving the education award at the Aspira Circle of Achievers Dinner on June 13th, as well as being selected as this year's Grand Marshal of the National Puerto Rican Day Parade, which took place just a few weeks ago. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, just a few hours ago, I was pleased to give what was called a keynote address at the Education Update Distinguished Leaders in Education Award Ceremonies, and three of our very distinguished members of the CUNY family were, were recognized. First, our own Jay Hershenson, who we now just call Jay because he's just so well-known by everybody in the city, Tomas Morales, and Jennifer Rab. All spoke beautifully, and we were very pleased to be part of that impressive ceremony this morning. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions for the chancellor on his report? Professor Cooper.
Not precisely, if you don't mind. I just would like to take this opportunity to ask the trustees who received a letter that I sent, as opposed to my reading it out loud, to take the opportunity to read it. There are points in there which were made powerfully last Monday at the public hearing by my colleagues, and I really think it's crucial for you to hear and understand what they were talking about. The subject is ways of dealing with transfer that improves rather than destroys the curriculum we have created. The letter is fairly clear. I'm not reading it because it's too long, and I know you'd rather get on with other business. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? If not, we'll, we'll move to the items requiring a vote. You have on the table the chancellor's university report for June 25th, 2012. And I want to add one table item that refers to the appointment of Dr. Fred Nader as interim Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost at the College of Staten Island. You'll find a copy of this table item in your, in your place. I would like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Chancellor's report carries. Next, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and the executive session of April 30th, 2012. You'll find a copy of the draft minutes in Section 2 of your board book. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any revisions to the minutes or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are approved. We'll turn now to our committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs, the Subcommittee on Audit, and the Subcommittee on Investment met in joint session on June 4th. The meeting commenced with a report on the 2012-2016 City University Master Plan by Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza and Executive Vice Chancellor Alexa Logue. Once the presentation was completed, the committee returned to its regular agenda and proceeded to approve the minutes from its prior meeting on April 2nd. The committee then proceeded to approve the following resolutions. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution to authorize the university to choose a beverage manufacturer to be the exclusive provider of soft drinks, teas, waters, juices, and certain other beverages to the university in exchange for the payment of royalties and other valuable considerations to the university and college-related entities. The term of the contract or contracts resulting from the solicitation process shall either be five or 10 years without renewals as determined in the best interest of the university. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar Item 3A.
I'll second that motion. Are there questions for the committee on, on whoring rights? Not all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 3A carries.
Calendar Item 3B is a resolution requesting the Board of Trustees of the university to authorize the General Counsel to execute contracts on behalf of the university to pay, purchase cleaning, maintenance, and paper products. The contracts shall be available for the use by all constituent colleges, and the total cost shall not exceed $6 million per fiscal year. University-wide contracts for these commodities will maximize the buying power of the university and provide standard products and prices for all of the colleges. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar Item 3B.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 3B carries.
Calendar Item 3C is a resolution authorizes the university to discontinue the university's accelerated study fee. The application of this fee has been increasing administrative burden over the years. It continues to place greater responsibility for academic counseling matters on fiscal administrators by applying a fee for taking additional course, courses, which disadvantages many students with limited financial resources. Discontinuation of the fee has the support of the university's Office of Academic Affairs. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar Item 3C.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 3C carries.
Following the approval of all of the action items by the committee, Associate Vice Chancellor Sapienza gave an update on the fiscal year 2012-2013 New York State and New York City budgets. Following his report, the Subcommittee on Audit was convened after approval of the minutes of its prior meeting. KPMG, our outside auditors, gave a report on the 2012 audit plan, which was substantially, excuse me, which was subsequently approved by the members of the Subcommittee. Following the adjournment of the Subcommittee on Audit, the Subcommittee on Investment was convened after approval of the minutes of the meeting of its prior Subcommittee meeting. The meeting was adjourned to go into executive session for asset allocation review and recommendations. After resuming the public meeting, the adoption of the recommendations to increase real assets in emerging markets by five percent and one percent respectively, and to decrease fixed income, U.S. equity, and non-U.S. equity by five percent, point five percent, and point five percent respectively, were approved. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'd like to call on trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its June 4th, 2012 meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar Number 4A, the City University of New York 2012-2016 Master Plan. Every four years, the Board of Regents of the Department of Education of the State of New York requires CUNY to submit a master plan for the following four years. The current plan articulates the wide-ranging goals of the university for 2012 and 2016, and the steps needed to reach those goals. CUNY goals are grouped into four categories: academic excellence, maintaining the university as integrated system and facilitating articulation, expansion of access, and responsiveness to the needs of the university urban setting. Calendar Number 4B, New York City College of Technology, BTECH in Electrical Engineering Technology. This degree completion is for those holding an associate's degree in a related field. The program will provide in-depth education and training in control systems, instrumentation systems, communication systems, and power electronic systems. The program requires mathematics and general education courses beyond the associate degree, providing students with the tools to integrate concepts from other relevant disciplines. The program prepares students for entering employment as technologists. Calendar Number 4C, Queensboro Community College, closing the Medical Engineering, Technology, and Design Drafting Department. Historically, Queensboro Community College has had two relatively small academic departments in related fields of study. One, Mechanical Engineering, Technology, and Design Drafting, and the other, Electrical and Computer Engineering. These two departments are now merging and will be known as the Department of Engineering Technology. The combined department will continue offering all related programs currently existing at the college. Calendar Number 4D, Graduate School and University Center, Institute for Language Education in Transcultural Context. The proposed institute is expected to play a vital role in fostering the study of foreign languages at CUNY campuses. Particular attention will be given through the strategic coordination of programming to support languages whose enrollment numbers do not justify their being offered at every member institution, or that are at risk of not being offered at all. The Graduate Center will be the host campus where Hunter and Queens Colleges joining as partners in the pilot years. As a large urban university in the nation's most linguistically diverse, CUNY is uniquely poised to undertake this project in support of preserving and enhancing linguistic resources. Calendar Number 4E, Hunter College, CUNY Institute for Education Policy at Roosevelt House. This institute will focus on analysis, discussion, and dissemination of policy initiatives affecting public education at every level. The institute will concentrate on current reform agendas and policy initiatives that show promise for the future, and will be directed by David M. Steiner, who's the Clara and Larry Silverstein Dean at Hunter College School of Education. Dr. Steiner has previously served as Commissioner of Education for the state of New York. Calendar Number 4F, Graduate School and University Center, Ph.D. in Nursing. This action item does not create a new program per se, but rather calls for a change in the degree awarded for the existing Doctor of Nursing Science program. The distinction between the DNS, which is a research doctorate, and the PhD, which is also a research doctorate, has decreased over time. As a result, most DNS programs across the country have already converted to PhD programs in response to this national trend, consistent with the accrediting bodies' recommendations. And given that DNS curriculum at CUNY has already been strengthened as appropriate for a PhD program, the program is now ready to be termed a PhD. Calendar Number 4G and 4H, College of Staten Island and Hunter College, DPT in Physical Therapy. These items also involve a change in the registration of an existing program. At present, CUNY only has a single DPT registration with the Graduate Center as the granting institution, and CSI and Hunter as the non-granting partners. The program was originally registered this way because historically, the granting of all doctoral degrees at CUNY occur at the Graduate Center. However, with the recent increase at CUNY of professional doctoral degrees, particularly in the health sciences, an update of this policy became necessary. And a few years ago, it was decided that on a case-by-case basis, campuses other than Graduate Center could bestow professional doctors. In reality, the DPT program has already functioned as two separate programs, taught on the two participating campuses. The national accrediting body also considers the Hunter and CSI programs to be separate entities, and already accredits them separately. The proposed change of degree authority will thus bring the State Education Department... The proposed change of degree authority would thus bring the state education department registration in line with the reality how the programs are being taught and accredited. Because this will be the first doctoral degree, level degree program offered by CSI, this action will also require a change of the college master plan. Calendar number 4I, honorary degrees to be awarded at Hunter and Megas Everest Colleges. Hunter College seeks to award Carmen "Bocham" Ciparic, Senior Associate Judge, New York City Court of State of Appeals, the Honorary Doctor of Law. Judge Ciparic is a Hunter College alumna, class of 63, who's also -- who has had a distinguished career in the municipal and state law, the first judge of Hispanic background to be appointed to the Court of Appeals. She's recognized for her longstanding commitment to fostering diversity in the legal profession. Megas Everest College seeks to award John Ruffin, Director of National Center for Minority Health and Health Disparities, the Honored Doctor of Science, and Winston Masalas, the award-winning jazz musician, the Honorary Doctor of Fine Arts. Dr. Ruffin is a well-respected leader and visionary in the field of minority health disparities. As a scholar, he has devoted his professional career to improving the health status of underserved populations. He has successfully developed programs to increase the cadre of minority scientists, physicians, and other health professionals. Winston Masalas is a renowned jazz musician who has won a total of eight Grammy Awards. He's also -- he's a co-founder and the artistic director of Jazz at Lincoln Center, an arts facility for jazz performances and educational programs. Item number 4A through 4I were approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'll second those items. Are there any questions on any of the items 4A through I? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, those items carry.
Information items. Vice Chancellor Gillian Small described a new initiative of her office, the CUNY Hub for Innovation Entrepreneurship. This is a new CUNY facility established to promote entrepreneurship and provide assistance, essential services, and appropriate space to startup companies created by the CUNY faculty. The hub is especially important for faculty who receive small business innovation research and small business technology transfer grants. The hub will occupy 7,100 feet at 215 West 125th Street, is expected to house about 15 companies after 18 months, and 26 companies by the end of the third year. Executive Vice Chancellor Alexandra Logue reported on the continued progress of the Pathways Project. Colleges are deep in the process of creating new general education courses. The courses for the Common Core are being submitted for approval to a CUNY-wide faculty review committee. Work is also -- is progressing well on aligning the first courses for the largest transfer majors. Seven transfer committees have completed their work, and four more have begun. Progress is also being made, modifying our software system to accommodate the new academic requirements. Executive Vice Chancellor Logue also reported that the new community college is on track to open as scheduled in September with an initial class of 300 students. At the end of the summer, the new community college will have an accreditation site visit by the New York State Education Department, and is expected to be accredited by the New York State by the end of the fall. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Chancellor, do you have a comment?
Yes, you know, the development and support of a master plan is a big deal for the university because, in part, it is a lens on our future, but it also is the derivative of where our budget requests come from. And it required an enormous amount of work, and I'd like to just very, very quickly acknowledge first and foremost Executive Vice Chancellor Alexa Logue, who really did the lion's share of organizing and developing the themes for the master plan. Thanks also to the many faculty. We had an extraordinary amount of faculty who expressed interest and helped to define the issues and help with the narrative about explaining why we are approaching some of the challenges the way we did, and the large numbers of staff and students from across the university, as well as our college presidents and other administrators who provided written comments or participated in interviews concerning their areas of responsibility. A number of our -- members of our board came forward with a number of suggestions, and I want to thank you for that. The large number of staff in the Office of Academic Affairs who worked tirelessly to put this together, the members of the Chancellery, and finally Britt Kerwin, the Chancellor of the University of Maryland, who I asked to serve as an external reviewer, who really said he's been asked to do this on a number of occasions, but had never seen a master plan as forward-thinking and as comprehensive and as well-argued as the one that he saw from CUNY. So, all of you, kudos for your good work, and we deeply appreciate the time spent on task for this important, important work.
Thank you very much. I'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, Trustee Valerie Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now present the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at its meeting on June 6, 2012, for the board's approval. In addition, we have two items that were received after our meeting that we deem significant enough to bring to you today. I will share those items at the end of my report. Item 5A amends the university's policy on the acceptable use of computer resources to address issues that have arisen since the policy was adopted in 2007. Among other points, the amendments clarify that the policy applies to all faculty, full-time, part-time, and ab junk, and to both current and former users of CUNY computer resources. CUNY's rights to review a user's CUNY account include the right to review personal messages. Information in a CUNY user's account, including personal messages, may be subject to disclosure under foil. CUNY has the right and obligation to copy a user's account or hard drive without inspecting it at any time for preservation of evidence without notice to the user, and CUNY users may request an exception or waiver of one or more provisions of the policy. Mr. Chair, I present Item 5A for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much. You have a copy of the full policy in your board book. I'll second that motion. Are there questions for the committee? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Thank you. Item 5B concerns the adoption of a salary plan for titles within the university's executive compensation plan, following a periodic assessment consistent with the plan's requirement that it be reviewed no less frequently than every five years. Chairman Smith, I understand that you wish to speak to this matter.
Yes, you have a copy of the new salary plan in your book. I would like to suggest one revision based on this letter which I received from the Chancellor. Dear Benno, as you know, the Board of Trustees is scheduled to consider revisions in the CUNY executive compensation plan at its meeting on June 25th. I'm requesting one revision in the plan. Under the column labeled "Salary Range as Effective 6/2012" for the Chancellor, the proposed minimum and maximum salary ranges for the position should be deleted. Instead, the following words should be included: "Future salary to be determined by the Board of Trustees." I'm not requesting any other changes in the plan and wish to take this opportunity to reiterate that no salary increases for any individuals under the executive pay plan are being proposed. This simply establishes new ranges. I remain deeply grateful for the support of the board, the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, and the Ad Hoc Committee on Compensation, which worked so diligently on this plan. With this change, I recommend its approval. So, Trustee Beal, if you are agreeable, I would like your motion to continue with the revision that I described.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I accept your revision. Therefore, I will submit Item 5B, Adoption of a Salary Plan for Titles Within the Executive Compensation Plan, as revised for the board's consideration.
I'll thank you very much. Is there discussion of the new executive salary plan? Yes. Trustee Padaleo.
Mr. Chairman, I was a member of this, the Ad Hoc Compensation Committee, and I think a couple of points need to be made that are relevant about this plan, because I believe there's some misunderstanding. As was stated, it is not proposing a raise or an increase for anyone. That's not what this is. It is merely a normal executive compensation procedure to have ranges. However, we engaged a consultant to do this, and the consultant looked at market surveys and engaged in comparative analysis of peer institutions and systems. It should be noted that we actually did not take the consultant's recommendation on the bottom end of the range. It was necessary for us to actually lower the bottom ends of the range to cover the folks who are actually being paid under that range. Had we accepted the consultant's recommendation, it would have resulted in presumably immediate or pretty close to immediate salary increases. Not that I would specify I think that's a bad idea, but nevertheless, to deal with the realities that we are dealing with, irrespective of the fact that peer institutions' bottom salary for these job classifications are often materially higher than our bottom salaries for that, and notwithstanding the fact that many of these peer institutions are not in markets such as New York, that is singularly one of the most expensive places to live in the United States, and frankly, further notwithstanding the fact that many of the people who are affected at the bottom range of these salary ranges and who will not be getting an increase because we lowered it, are handling budgets and matters and administrative tasks in a high -- of a highly complex nature for which they would expect to get market-based remuneration, and they have not. And the final thing I would say that we did not consider is we did not consider the fact that others in the university, not the least of which are other professionals within the university, have been routinely getting salary increases, and we routinely mark them to market, if you will, by reference to their collective bargaining agreements. We decided to lower that range. So, I do think it's important that people understand this is not, one, a backdoor way to immediately provide salary increases irrespective of the merits for doing so. That's very important. And, two, that CUNY now finds itself, based on the reports of Mercer, one of the top executive and management compensation consultants in the world, of paying not insignificantly below market value for its professional and administrative staff. Irrespective of that, I would just urge as a member of the Ad Hoc Committee that this -- these salary ranges be approved. They are a small step, but they are nevertheless the best that we felt that we can do in these very difficult times.
All right. Thank you very much. Trustee Weisenthal.
Just on the last point by you, Trustee Padaleo, what you very skillfully also tried to skim over is that for years that we've been on the board, and this question comes up every few years, whether instigated by whatever party, this extreme striving for egalitarianism and every approach on everything that's forced on the board, even though the board has taken great care, as you pointed out, to take an accounting of current economic conditions in not providing for the increases that could be provided for if relevant -- if they were relevant to the marketplace. But nonetheless, the board gets a lot of hell, the Chancellery gets a lot of hell, and it's just needless rancor with which students and others could be using their energy more productively, and they're instigated to get into a conflict that doesn't even exist where the board is already conscious of this. And that's the one thing that I think respectfully was glossed over, and it's got to be made a point, because it doesn't help the university.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other comments, Trustee Beal?
And I will just add that I regretfully accepted the Chancellor's gracious offer to remove his compensation from this study. As we noticed, it was a compensation plan. It was not an attempt to institute a payroll, a pay increase, but the Chancellor has graciously removed his compensation from this study, and I appreciate his willingness to do that. Having said that, please note that the plan was done, as we said, by outside consultants and reflective of market conditions.
It should be said that the Chancellor's own compensation is considerably below market, particularly given the enormous complexity and size of CUNY as a system, and particularly given the fact that he is the most outstanding public university leader in the country, without a doubt. But my efforts to, over the years, persuade him to take a compensation that more justly and fairly reflects his value to the university, and what he would easily be paid were he to go anywhere else, he has resisted that every year because of the general financial exigencies faced by our university system and because of the symbolism entailed in what his compensation level is relative to others at the university. But I'm going to continue with my interest in trying to move everyone's salaries up to competitive levels, because you're just asking for trouble if you don't try to do that. And the fact is, if you look at other system heads of anything like CUNY's complexity, I believe they're virtually all compensated at a considerably higher, higher level. Yes, I'm sorry, Trustee Koaku?
Yes. I'd just like to bring the concern of some of my fellow students in regard to the increase in the salary range. First of all, the reason why there is so much reluctance from the student side is because of the misinformation that went out at first, because the information that was given to the student was that the Chancellor was getting an increase, which was not the truth. And from the few I got a chance to meet with, I was able to explain the situation to them and tell them that it's just a review that's supposed to be happening every five years, and that was conducted, and it's only a review of the salary range. Now, from those I spoke to, their main concern at this point of time is, yes, it's a review for the salary range, but when will the actual increase happen? Because there's no timeline to that. The Chancellor was gracious enough to, you know, even meet with me and explain to me that there is no, at this point of time, going to be any kind of increase in any kind of salaries at this point of time. But still, the student feel like, because of the recent wave of student activism that happened, especially starting from the tuition increase, the student felt like if there will be an increase in their tuition for the next five years, there should not even be a consideration of reviews, which, to some extent, I don't agree with personally. That's my personal opinion in regard to that, because I believe if you work for any kind of company, your salary should be reviewed time to time. But their concern is that when will this actual increase be put forward towards the -- for the board? And their fear is this might happen in a year, in a year or two, and they wouldn't really feel comfortable with that actual increase in salary being put forward if the tuition increase is going to be happening until the next four years moving forward. So, that's the concern of the student body at this point of time.
Trustee Kafui, let me say that the best I can say is that I have absolutely no plans at this point in time to recommend any salary increases for any members of the executive group, which probably numbers close to 500 people here in the university. To say when that would change is subject to lots of variables that are not clearly defined at this particular point in time. So, for the immediate future, there is no plan at all, and that was important for everybody to understand. all, and that was important for everybody to, to understand.
Trustee Padaleo?
Just a point of clarification. I referenced the Mercer study. I have no idea whether or not that is confidential, but if trustees want to see it, may they?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, sure. Jay, just ask Jay, and he'll get your copy. Yeah. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, with the revision noted, are you ready? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions?
Abstention, Mr. Chair.
One abstention. Thank you very much. That item is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I hope that the correct information and interpretation is shared with our student body after the, after this vote as well. Items 5C creates a new research professor title series that will bring the university's title structure for faculty in line with that of many research-oriented institutions. The new titles are distinct from the current faculty titles and that their focus is on research. Regular teaching assignments are not a component of the job description. Appointments may be made either within or outside of academic departments. These title definitions and qualifications, if approved, will be incorporated into a code of practice established for instructional staff titles by the vice chancellor for human resources management, who will be responsible for establishing the initial salary ranges and terms and conditions of employment of these titles. Mr. Chair, I present item 5C for the Board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions that carries?
Thank you. Item 5D proposes a title definition and qualification for Einstein professors. The title Einstein Professor has been in existence at the university since 1979. The university reserves appointment as an Einstein professor to an elite cadre of outstanding scholars in scientific disciplines. The proposed title definition and qualifications, if approved, will be incorporated into a code of practice established for instructional staff titles by the vice chancellor for human resource management. Mr. Chair, I present item 5D for the Board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the Einstein professorships? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions that carries?
Thank you. Item 5E requests approval of an interim governance plan for the new community college, which will enroll its first students in August. This initial plan is intended to guide the new college's operations during its early years, with the understanding that as it grows, the governance plan may be revised to address evolving circumstances. The proposed plan is informed by the report of the Working Group on Governance and Organizational Structure comprised of faculty and administrators from across the City University and other institutions. The work of the new community college governance task force comprised the faculty and staff of the college and supported by the university's general counsel and broad discussion with the college community. Mr. Chair, I present item 5E for the Board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions on 5E? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions that carries?
Item 5F involves amendments to the governance plan of Queensborough Community College in order to make it consistent with CUNY's bylaws, the bylaws of QCC faculty, and to modify current practices at QCC. These amendments were taken by the college in consultation with the office of the general counsel, have been approved by the QCC Academic Senate, and are recommended by the college president. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration recommends their adoption. Mr. Chair, I present item 5F for the Board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the Queensborough plan? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any negative abstentions that carries?
Item 5G also amends a governance plan, this one at City College, proposing a change in the college's promotion procedure. The proposed amendment states that if the department chairperson cannot chair the promotions committee because of his or her rank, the department faculty shall elect a member of the highest rank to be chairperson of the promotions committee, rather than have the most senior person automatically serve as chairperson. Thus, the proposed change will ensure that department as a whole participates in the election of the chairperson of a promotions committee. Mr. Chair, I present item 5G for the Board's consideration.
Second that. Are there questions on this item? Not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions that carries?
Item 5H names the Dave Fields Auditorium at CUNY School of Law. Dave Fields, university dean and special counsel to the chancellor, has bequeathed $1 million to the law school. His generosity through this gift will have an enormous impact on CUNY Law's ability to provide critical financial support to students and faculty alike. In recognition of his exemplary service to the CUNY School of Law and his generous request, it is recommended that the auditorium on the second floor of the law school's new building at Two Court Street in Long Island City be named the Dave Fields Auditorium. Mr. Chair, I-
I'll second that. All in favor, please. Adopted by acclamation.
Thank you. Item 5I names the Martin and Michelle Cohen Dean of Science, Cohen professorships, and the Cohen Fund for Science at the City College of New York, in recognition of the Cohen's pledge of $10 million for use by the college's Division of Science. This gift will create the college's first endowed deanship, two endowed professorships, and a fund for science intended to fund the startup costs of the dean and professors. Mr. Chair, I present item 5I for the Board's approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the Cohen gift? Not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions that carries?
Items 5J, 5K, 5L, and 5M are naming opportunities at Baruch College, which I will present as a group. They are the William Newman Department of Real Estate and the Zicklin School of Business, the William M. Newman Director of the Jewish Studies Center, the Richard A. Samberg Class of 63 Lecture Hall, and the Sandra and Lawrence Simon Conference Room. Current and previous gifts associated with these names total almost $30 million. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed them and recommends their approval. Mr. Chair, I present item 5J, K, and L for the Board's consideration.
I'll second those items. Are there questions on the Baruch naming? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions that carries?
Item 5N and O are naming opportunities at Queens College, which I will also present together. They are the Dina Axelrod Perry Professorship in Economics, the Florence and Bernard Friedman Endowment for the Social Sciences, and the Florence Friedman Room. Mr. Chair, I present items 5N and 5O for the Board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions that those items carry?
5P designates three new distinguished professors effective September 1, 2012. The committee has reviewed each of these outstanding appointments and is pleased to recommend their approval. They are Dr. Dagmar Herzog, distinguished professor of history at the Graduate School and University Center, Dr. Jeffrey T. Parsons, distinguished professor of psychology at Hunter College, Dr. John Madison, distinguished professor of English at the John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Mr. Chair, I present these appointments for the Board's approval.
I'll second those, those motions. Are there questions about these distinguished professors? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions those carry?
Mr. Chair, I'm delighted that all of our new distinguished professors are here tonight. I therefore would like to invite President William Kelly to introduce Professor Herzog, after which President Jennifer Robb will introduce Professor Parsons, and Professor Jeremy Travis will introduce Professor Madison.
Thank you, trustee Beal. When in 2002, we first became interested in bringing Dagmar Herzog from Michigan State to the Graduate Center, we contacted more than a dozen senior scholars from across the country. Their responses were uniformly positive. Indeed, a striking leitmotif emerged from the letters we received. At a very early point in her career, Dagmar Herzog was, we were told, a rising star poised to become, in the words of Anson Robbenbach at Princeton, "one of the most innovative and productive scholars of her generation." She was, according to V.R. Burhan, the Seth Loe Professor at Columbia, "one of the most productive and imaginative historians of modern Germany of her generation." Far from hyperbolic, these assessments accorded with our own sense of Professor Herzog's achievement and of her promise, that judged predicated primarily on two deeply engaging books, both published by Princeton University Press. These books linked religious thinking, intimate life, and public policy in modern Germany. The first of those books, Intimacy and Exclusion: Religious Politics in Pre-Revolutionary Baden, examined the ways in which debates within the German Christian community over sexuality, women's rights, and the status of Jews contributed to the formation of liberalism as a political force. By re-centering religion as a primary element in the development of German liberalism, Professor Herzog reset the scholarly agenda, producing, in the words of Professor Michael Geyer of the University of Chicago, "a paradigmatic effect which required scholars to think differently about 19th century German politics and the relation of those politics to religious life." Professor Herzog's second book, which was in production during our recruitment, shifted her focus to 20th century German history and to the central role sexuality played in German politics during and after the Third Reich. Sex After Fascism: Memory and Morality in 20th Century Germany traces the ways in which sexual morality was mobilized for political ends in both West and East Germany as debates over sexual mores during the Nazi era became a vehicle for defining Germany's relation to its past and its conception of the future. That these books were supported by three significant collection of essays, service on major editorial boards, and deep involve, and deep involvement in Holocaust education programs fueled our desire to bring Professor Herzog to the City University. That decision has yielded rich dividends in the decade that she has been with us. Professor Herzog has said the tag, has shed the tag of emerging star, of wunderkind. She is now without question one of the world's leading historians of German and indeed of European and American life in the 19th and 20th centuries. To call her prolific is to do scant service. She's produced two more influential monographs, Sex and Crisis: The New Sexual Revolution and the Future of American Politics, published by Basic Books, and Sexuality in Europe: A 20th Century History, published by Cambridge University Press. Two other books are in progress, with History in Mind, Psychoanalysis in a Postwar World, and Reproductive Rights and Disability Rights in the European Union. In addition, Professor Herzog has published more than 30 scholarly articles, more than 20 reviews. You may have seen one in yesterday's New York Times Book Review, and six edited, six edited collections. Further, she is the recipient of some of the most significant honors in her field. She has been a Mellon Fellow at Harvard, a member of the School of Social Science at the Institute for Advanced Studies at Princeton, a Fellow of the Institute for Advanced Studies in Humanities at Essen, a Frederick Burckhardt Fellow at the American Council of Learned Societies, a DAAD Scholar at Cornell. She's received significant grant support from the Social Science Research Council, the Ford Foundation, the National Endowment for the Humanities, and the Holocaust Educational Foundation. Earlier this spring, she was awarded a Guggenheim Fellowship. You will not be surprised to learn that the 15 internationally eminent scholars whom we contacted during this distinguished professor process were unanimous in their view that Professor Herzog had made pathbreaking and enduring contributions in three critical fields, the history of religion, the history of the Holocaust, and the history of gender and sexuality. Indeed, her innovative work at the intersection of those three fields has made it impossible to think of any of them as distinct disciplines. Nancy Cott, the Trumbull Professor of American History at Harvard, told us that Professor Herzog's work in the history of sexuality stands above that of virtually any other scholar because of its brilliant originality and inclusiveness. Omer Bartov, the Birkeland Professor of European History at Brown, noted Professor Herzog's cutting-edge methodologies and theoretical innovations. I can think of no one, he wrote, whom I would rather have as a member of my own department. Doris Bergen, the Wolf Professor of Holocaust Studies at Toronto, called Professor Herzog's work on antisemitism and Holocaust memory indispensable. I'd call your attention as well to Professor Herzog's remarkable record as a teacher and a mentor. This spring, her students in the history program took it upon themselves to nominate her for the American Historical Association's Nancy Lyman Rolker Mentorship Award. The standard packet for such nominations would include four or five testimonials. Professor Herzog's students presented 17, each a glowing tribute to her care and her support. Professor Herzog, one of those students wrote, "has managed to combine the highest level of commitment to her own work with the genuine care for that of her students." For me, the most inspiring of these letters came from a student whose work was distant from Professor Herzog's home fields and whose mentorship required the mastery of another scholarly literature. Although I am an historian of Japan, he wrote, "Professor Herzog generously accepted me as one of her students. She's written countless letters on my behalf, introduced me to dozens of scholars, and tirelessly corrected my various applications, a daunting task given my non-native speakers' propensity for errors in grammar." Finally, Mr. Chairman, I note my gratitude to Chancellor Goldstein and to the members of this board for the unfailing support of excellence at the Graduate Center and across the university, is that commitment that enables us to attract and sustain faculty members of the caliber of Dagmar Herzog. It is with equal portions of pleasure and pride then that I present Dagmar Herzog to you as a candidate, in fact, now as CUNY's most recent distinguished professor. Thank you very much.
I'm sort of overwhelmed. It's funny to get an award for my scholarship when really I turned to writing to support my teaching habit. I knew I loved teaching when I entered my first classroom at Brown University as a graduate student. It was European intellectual history. We taught Rousseau, Hegel, Nietzsche, Sartre, but just the real text, nothing else about it. And I was hooked, and I've loved it ever since. I've loved teaching since then. But I have never loved a university the way I love this one. I am so proud and so honored to be part of the City University system. I love the students I have. I love my colleagues. I certainly love my boss, and the big boss over there. But there is no other university that so combines and makes possible the synergy between scholarship, teaching, and outreach to the wider public. And in my case, that means work with the media, speaking to general audiences, and also in my newest work on psychiatry and psychoanalysis, speaking with medical professionals and public health professionals. But this is an amazing institution. I am so privileged to be part of it. So thank you.
Good afternoon. It is a great pleasure to introduce to the board, and thank you for your support for Jeff Parsons' nomination for distinguished professor. Jeff, as you will hear, is an outstanding academic, and I am also very proud and privileged to call him a close colleague and friend. Dr. Parsons is one of the world's leading experts in four areas of psychological and public health research: sexual health, substance abuse, the physical and mental health of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered people, and most prominently HIV/AIDS prevention. Dr. Parsons is one of our most prolific grant getters at Hunter College, bringing in over $30 million in research funds in 12 years, with just recently two new R01s. Given the often controversial nature of Dr. Parsons' research and the sensitive and often taboo conclusions he reaches, I want to particularly thank Chairman Schmidt, the Board of Trustees, and the chancellor for your support for this nomination. I believe it is one of the highest and strongest affirmations of academic freedom that this nomination has received such strong support throughout all levels of CUNY, completely on the merits and without regard to any controversy and conclusions that may arise from Dr. Parsons' research and conclusions. Among his many awards and honors, Dr. Parsons has won some of the prestigious awards in his profession: the Distinguished Scientific Achievement Award from the American Psychological Association for his research in LBGT issues, the John Money Award from the Society for the Scientific Study of Sexuality, the leading professional society of multidisciplinary sexual health scientists. When political policy and science leaders need advice on matters- When political policy and science leaders need advice on matters related to HIV/AIDS, they call Jeff Parsons. He chairs one of the two NIH study sections that provides scientific review of all HIV-related behavioral and social research. He is the editor-in-chief of Sexuality Research and Social Policy, an international interdisciplinary journal dedicated to empirical research on sexuality and its social science implications. In the past two years alone, he has been called upon by the National Institutes of Health, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the New York City Department of Health, and even the White House to provide input to advance HIV/AIDS policy and research. The only mystery is how he managed to be so innovative and productive as a scientist when he is on speed dial for the federal government. And innovative and productive he is. When Jeff started working on AIDS research, almost all existing work focused on how to keep uninfected individuals from becoming HIV-positive. Jeff was one of the first researchers in the world to focus his work on those already living with HIV and AIDS and study the unique prevention issues within this population. He pioneered the detailed study of sexual risk practices and harm-reduction strategies used by HIV-positive people to reduce the risk of transmitting HIV. One of the hallmarks of Dr. Parsons’ work, and one of the keys to his success, is that his work keeps evolving, and now Dr. Parsons studies the risk of HIV infection within longstanding gay relationships, among other topics. His record of peer-reviewed publications is over 200, and he is just 45 years old, which is quite astonishing. Jeff’s work is outstanding, as every one of his reviewers note, but just as important, his work has a tremendous impact on people’s lives. For example, Dr. Parsons developed and evaluated the only behavioral intervention thus far that actually works to increase HIV medication adherence among HIV-positive men and women. This intervention has been adopted and is being used across the U.S. in Thailand, China, and South Africa. His work on the role that methamphetine use plays in dramatically increasing risky sexual behavior has directly informed public media campaigns in New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, and elsewhere to make people aware of the unique dangers of this substance. As the 15th Surgeon General of the U.S., Dr. Joycelin Elders stated in her remarkable letter of recommendation for Jeff, “If distinguished professor titles are reserved for faculty with records of exceptional performance by national and international standards of excellence in their profession, then certainly Dr. Parsons’ scholarly contributions in terms of peer-reviewed publications and federal grant funding qualifies him for such a distinction.” I could not agree more with Dr. Elders, and as Hunter’s president, I want to add how important it is to us at Hunter that Jeff accomplishes all he does while being an exceptional classroom teacher. Many professors struggle to get students enrolled to come to class, but even students who are not enrolled in Dr. Parsons’ class come to hear him lecture, often to standing-room-only crowds. He is a fierce and dedicated mentor to countless doctoral students in psychology at the Graduate Center and has also stepped forward to mentor his colleagues in the department. It takes a village, we believe, to make a distinguished professor, and I want to spend a moment of thank to thank a few people. First, to our Vice Chancellor Lexa Loeb for your support for Jeff through the controversial nature. As we’ve discussed, Jeff’s subject matter, to his research methods, to his findings, are often highly controversial and often end up being cited by Congress or press for their sensational nature. Executive Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs Lexa Loeb provided her guidance and support for this nomination. She also worked very well with us in responding to the fact that Jeff is well-known at Hunter and CUNY for pushing many boundaries. And I also want to thank our friend Richard Rothbard here, who has worked closely with Jeff and us in making sure that we can accommodate all of Dr. Parsons’ many evolving needs for his research portfolio. Finally, our provost is here, Chancellor, who has been very supportive in both hiring Jeff when she was Chair of the Psychology Department and nurturing his career as Associate Provost and as Provost. Behind every great man, there are often other great men, and we want to thank today Jeff’s partner, Chris, and particularly their son, Henry. Now, Henry asked a very important question regarding the distinguished professor nomination, which was whether it came with a trophy. And it seemed to me that it should. So, Henry, I was wondering if Henry could come up and get his father’s trophy. So, Henry, would you like to come get the trophy? And Henry, we also think that’s not as much fun. Would you like to come? So, it is a great pleasure to introduce Dr. Jeff Parsons, Henry’s dad, and our new distinguished professor.
Thank you so much. This is an incredible honor, and I’ve been called many things in my life, both professionally and personally, but distinguished has never been one of them. So, this is quite a treat, and I’m honored and humbled to be here and to be given this honor. And I really want to acknowledge and thank some amazing women who have participated in this process and my own professional development. First of all, President Robb. No academic could wish for a more dedicated and supportive president. It’s just impressive and thrilling to be able to work with her. And as she’s indicated, being supportive of me is not always easy when I end up on news reports and when my research gets twisted for political purposes and the like. When she first tried to reach out to me to let me know about this, I saw on my cellphone that I had a missed call from President Robb, and my immediate reaction was to Google my own name to see if some new scandalous report had come out before I called her back. And having not seen my name in Google, I was able to call her, and she told me the good news. But it is that type of relationship that we have and that I treasure and enjoy very much. Provost Vita Robinowitz, who hired me when she was Chair of Psychology, has been an amazing and supportive influence, and she hired me about 12 years ago, and I’ve proceeded to make her life difficult pretty much ever since. Her unwavering support and belief in the type of work that we do and how it can change and save lives means very much to me, and it’s hard to imagine anybody who could be more sort of professionally and personally supportive of the type of work. She brought me to Hunter College when I was young and had potential. She saw that potential and nurtured it and supported it to help me become the scientist that I am today, and I’m always going to be grateful for that. I’d also like to thank my Chair, Vani Quinotis-Jenab. The Hunter Psych Department could not have a better leader, and I say this as the former Chair. So, I’m really particularly proud that Hunter and CUNY have recognized someone like me who does controversial psychological health research that’s focused on sexuality and sexual risk behavior with this type of honor. Unlike many other institutions, CUNY values scientific merit and advancing knowledge rather than shying away from controversy. And I also share this honor with the many wonderful and amazing CUNY students that I’ve really had the pleasure to work with, and I’m glad that I have the opportunity here at CUNY to train the next generation of scientists who are going to focus on sexual health research and continue to advance the field forward. I find it amazing that the former Surgeon General, Joycelin Elders, wrote a letter of support for my promotion, and I sort of think of how far we’ve come. In 1994, Joycelin Elders was fired from her position as Surgeon General of the United States for talking about masturbation, and now, 18 years later, I’m promoted to distinguished professor for talking about gay sex. So, I think we have come quite a ways. The work that we do at my research center does save and change lives, and so it is something that we all take incredibly seriously and are very focused on. We like to say that we take our work seriously, but we don’t take ourselves seriously, and I think it’s that balance that makes us able to do the very sensitive and oftentimes challenging work that we do, but still maintain the balance between professional work and our personal lives. I’ve had the privilege to work with so many wonderful colleagues at my research center over the years, and every day I get to go to work is an exciting prospect and a wonderful day, and it’s gratifying to be recognized for that type of work. I also finally want to thank the men in my life, my partner of 23 years, Chris, and our amazing son, Henry, who you just got to meet. They are my motivation and my inspiration and my joy on a daily basis, and we laugh together and love each other so much, and they make a lot of sacrifices so that I can do the type of work that I do. And so I hope that Henry will realize that even though this award doesn’t normally come with a trophy, but it did this time, that it is an incredible honor, and eventually he’ll fully understand what it means, and I hope that he’ll be very proud of his daddy, Jeff, and I thank you all very much.
Chairman Schmidt, Chancellor Goldstein, members of the board, it is with distinct pleasure that I come before you today to present John Madison for appointment to the rank of CUNY Distinguished Professor of English at John Jay College and to take this opportunity to thank the board for its support of that idea. Professor Madison, I’d like to point out, will join seven other John Jay faculty members whose exceptional scholarship has earned them appointments as distinguished professors. And the fact is that three of these are professors of history, and the added fact that, as of today, John Madison is a professor of English attests to the strength of the college’s liberal arts faculty, the importance of the liberal arts to our mission of educating for justice, and the quality of education that we provide in the liberal arts, which is now a renewed focus at John Jay thanks to the support from Chancellor Goldstein and the university. So, a few words about John Madison. As is reflected in John’s CV, John has an AB in history from Princeton and a PhD in English from Columbia, and it might sound like that was a traditional pathway to an academic career. However, he also holds a JD from Harvard and first practiced as a litigating attorney in California, North Carolina, and then made the brave and, for us, fortuitous decision to then pursue life as an academic and not a lawyer. John has spent over 15 years at John Jay, during which he built an international reputation for his scholarship in 19th-century American literary and cultural history. In 2008, his double biography of Louisa May Alcott and her father Bronson Alcott received the 2008 Pulitzer Prize for Biography. Chancellor Goldstein will recall that we learned of this decision by the Pulitzer Committee. When Chancellor Goldstein came to John Jay for what he thought was a rather routine meeting with the members of our faculty, we were then interrupted by the news that John had won the Pulitzer. Within five years of that extraordinary achievement, John has now published The Lives of Margaret Fuller, a book that was even more enthusiastically received than its Pulitzer Prize-winning predecessor, with glowing reviews in The New York Times, The Wall Street Journal, The Boston Globe, Minneapolis Star Tribune, Cleveland Plain Dealer, and The New Yorker, among many other newspapers and magazines. Distinguished Professor Joel Meyerson writes that this book, quote, “will solidify Madison’s reputation as one of the finest literary biographers writing today.” Indeed, says Meyerson, “I would place him in terms of 19th-century American literature at the top.” Professor Madison’s external letters of evaluation from some of the leading scholars of 19th-century American literature attest to his unusual ability to combine deep and groundbreaking archival research with insightful literary criticism. As to the quality of his writing, the consensus is that Professor Madison is a distinguished stylist. His prose is described as elegant, graceful, clear, beautiful, dramatically suspenseful, and eloquent. He is described as drawing, quote, “effortlessly from literary, intellectual, cultural, and social history, as well as a deep knowledge of human nature that conveys how individuals both shape and are shaped by their world.” Professor Gregory Iselin writes that Eden’s Auscast is, quote, “without question the best biographical work done on the Alcotts,” and is, in my view, along with Lewis Minan’s The Metaphysical Club, “one of the two greatest pieces of literary history written in the 21st century.” Professor Madison is a Fellow of the Massachusetts Historical Society, a former Fellow of the Leon Levy Center of Biography, where he now serves as Deputy Director. He has contributed his scholarship to such organizations and activities as the Louisa May Alcott Memorial Association, the National Endowment of the Humanities Landmarks Program, the Louisa May Alcott Society, the Harriet Beecher Stowe Center, and the Biographers International Organization. His work has appeared in The Wall Street Journal, The New York Times, The Harvard Theological Review, New England Quarterly, and Leviathan, a journal of Melville studies. Closer to home, Professor Madison has also received the Distinguished Faculty Award, presented by the John Jay College Alumni Association. In addition to being a distinguished scholar, Professor Madison is also a beloved teacher and mentor and an active citizen of the college, serving most recently as the faculty director of the John Jay Honors Program, which paved the way for John Jay’s admission to Macaulay Honors College. There is no doubt in my mind that Professor Madison will continue to be as productive and well-regarded a scholar in the coming years as he had been this past decade. He is presently under contract with Norton for an annotated edition of Little Women. His article on Margaret Fuller’s Summer on the Lakes has been accepted for publication in 19th-Century prose, and he is working on a prospectus for biography, one that he discussed this morning with Chairman Schmidt, of Oliver Wendell Holmes. He shows no signs of slowing his pace. So, now with the board’s approval in hand, we happily welcome John Madison into the ranks of distinguished professor in the discipline of English in his home at John Jay College.
Well, I concur with my fellow admities that this is really quite overwhelming, and I do thank you all. It’s been said that overnight success takes 15 years, and it’s either a common coincidence or evidence of the eternal fitness of things that I walked into my first CUNY classroom precisely 15 autumns ago. And it’s hard to imagine where the time has gone. I think probably about nine years of it went to grading papers, but obviously much of it, too, has gone into writing books and articles. It’s also been spent raising a daughter from the age of three to the verge of attending college and informing professional friendships both within and beyond this university that I hold incredibly, indescribably dear. It’s been my great good fortune to teach at the John Jay English Department a rare collection of dear friends and consummate professionals, as notable for their generosity and collegiality as for their impressive feats of scholarship. I’ve had the pleasure of sharing countless hours with my students at John Jay, who have never ceased to inspire me with their eagerness, their courage, and their persistence in facing every challenge. I have served, thankfully, under a quintet of outstanding department chairs: Bob Crozier, Tim Stevens, Chris Suggs, Marnie Tab, and Allison Pease, each of whom has made an indispensable contribution to my life as a scholar. I’ve also enjoyed serving under a pair of exceptional college presidents, Gerald Lynch and, of course, Jeremy Travis, who have become deservedly synonymous with educating for justice. In fact, I would like to pause for a very special word for President Travis, this wonderful man who has guided John Jay with such unparalleled grace, patience, and vision since his appointment in 2004. I have to say, one’s work matters a great deal more when one is able to do it for someone whom one deeply and sincerely admires. And for the past eight years, I have not achieved anything without saying to myself how wonderful it is to be doing this for Jeremy, and so, Jeremy, I thank you so very, very much. More recently, at the Leon Levy Center, I’ve been placed in proximity with yet another marvelous group of thinkers and doers. President Kelly, I cannot even put into words for you. I’m sorry to let you down, but so it comes. Provost Chase Robinson and the incomparable Gary Gibbons. Indeed, how lucky can one man be? But the fact is that before that autumn 15 years ago, I wasn’t feeling all that lucky. I hope you’ll bear with me as I go through some of the background. In 1991, just four months after marrying my wife, Michelle, I had left a secure career as a lawyer to attend graduate school in English. A lot of people, including my parents, thought I was crazy, but I knew that there was a part of my soul that would wither and die if I chose not to follow the shining star that is for me the love of to follow the shining star that is for me, the love of literature. And corny as it may sound, I had also recently seen the movie Field of Dreams, that Kevin Costner movie about a farmer who plows under his cornfield and builds a ball field because a voice has told him, "If you build it, he will come." Now, on the surface, of course, it's a baseball film. But more importantly, it's about making unpopular choices. It's making those choices that you could never possibly explain to anyone but are both right and indispensable. In 1991, I was thirty, pardon me, I was thirty years old. I knew that if I didn't start building my ball field soon, it would never be built. And so I sent away for applications. I studied for the GRE at night after work and managed to gain admission to just one, just one, of the programs to which I applied. I sold my car, traded my lawyer's salary for a grad student stipend, and set about building my dream. Well, in 1997, the year that I first came to John J., that dream was in doubt. A child had come along for whom I had become the primary caregiver, and so there was no chance for me to publish articles or give conference papers, as my grad school colleagues were doing. I had my hands full just writing my dissertation. I went to three MLA conferences in consecutive years, secured a total of one job interview. On the plane to that interview, I developed laryngitis for the first and only time in my life, and, and at the interview, could barely speak. I thought it was over, but then along came John J. A grad school colleague of mine knocked on my door one evening. He showed me an ad in The Chronicle of Higher Ed advertising a position for a professor who could teach law and literature. So I applied, interviewed on campus, and did not get the job. It went instead to a highly qualified applicant who had also served as one of Angela Davis's lawyers. You can't beat that for PC cred. But thank heavens, my mother raised me right. I sent a thank you letter to the Chair of the Department and told him I was available if he needed anyone to fill some sections. In mid-August, the phone call came. John J. had two sections of freshman comp and two sections of modern European lit. Did I want them? Oh, yes, I did. So that was how it started, a full-time sub-line that turned into a fifteen-year association, leading in turn, thank heavens, to today's appointment. Now, I tell that story not because I think it says anything about me, but I think it says a great deal about John J. and the City University in general. These are institutions that have always stood for the creation of opportunity, for discovering talent where others saw nothing special, for believing in someone, be she or he, a student or an instructor, when nobody else believed. And so in 1997, John J. gave me a shot, and it was all that I needed. And I'm proud to say today how grateful I am. So that movie Field of Dreams said, "If you build it, he will come." Amazingly enough, it wasn't a fairy tale. I did build that ball field, and people have come. But what matters now, and what matters most to me, is that every day at the City University, countless people whom you and I haven't met yet, people with faith and hope and no tools other than their hearts and minds and hands are working on their own ball fields. Year by year, credit by credit, those ball fields slowly take their wondrous shapes. Every one of them looks different in the mind of the person who's building it. Some of them sadly will never be finished, but the fact is, the fact that they're being built is the thing that is always to be remembered. And it is this remarkable university that makes them possible. This university that we all serve is doing a mighty, generous, irreplaceable work. Each day, we continue to build it, and thank heavens, the people do come.
Mr. Chair, I will continue with my report. Items 5Q names the Anya and Andrew Shiva Gallery in the new building at John J. College of Criminal Justice in consideration of the donor's pledge of $5 million to support the college doctoral program in forensic and criminal and clinical psychology. Mr. Chair, I present items 5Q for the board's approval.
I'll second the item. Is there any question or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? That carries.
I now wish to present two additional items that have come to our attention, which we would like, which we would ask the board to consider at this time in the best interests of the colleges. Copies of these resolutions are on your table. Item 5R involves an honorary naming at the College of Staten Island. I will read this resolution in its entirety. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the naming of the baseball field at the College of Staten Island at the Thomas D. Morales Baseball Field. Explanation: Dr. Morales, the third president of the College of Staten Island, has served in that capacity since 2007. During his tenure, President Morales has been a staunch supporter of student athletics as a way to promote student success and build the campus community. To enhance campus support for intercollegiate and intramural sports, President Morales instituted the CSI Scholar-Athlete Honor Roll and the CSI Future of Athletics Advisory Task Force. The college also hosted nine CUNY AC Championships. President Morales was honored with the 2011-12 CUNY AC Ellis Bullock Junior Award and the 2012 CSI Athletics Distinguished Service Award for his commitment to excellence in education and student athletics. In recognition of President Morales' service to the university, to the College of Staten Island, and his commitment to his students, it is proposed that the baseball field at CSI be named in his honor. Mr. Chair, I am delighted to present item 5R for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Surely, if they build it? Congratulations.
Our final added item, number 5S, is also a critical personnel, personnel action, which we put forward in the best interest of the institution. It is the appointment of Dr. Neil L. Cohen as Acting Dean of the School of Public Health at Hunter College, effective July 2nd, 2012. Dr. Cohen currently serves as Acting Associate Provost for Health and Social Welfare at Hunter College. Prior to joining Hunter in 2011, he served in a variety of capacities in academia, government, and the private sector. In addition, for over twenty years, Dr. Cohen has served in teaching positions at both Mount Sinai School of Medicine and New York University School of Medicine. The college president strongly recommends his appointment to this acting position. Mr. Chair, I present item 5S for the board's approval.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions or discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Call on trustee Frida Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered seven items at its meeting of June 4th, 2012. These action items are listed in the board meeting as calendar items 6A through G. A. Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. It's a lease agreement to authorize the general counsel to execute a ten-year lease for approximately 7,200 rentable square feet of space at 215 West 125th Street in New York, New York, for use by the CUNY Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. The new CUNY facility will provide assistance, essential services, and appropriate space for offices to set up companies created by CUNY faculty. The landlord shall perform improvements to the space specified by the university. The university will reimburse the landlord for its share of the university-requested improvements. The landlord will be responsible for exterior, structural, and interior repairs and cleaning. The university will be, also be responsible for increases in real estate taxes and direct operating expenses. The proposed new lease will be for a ten-year period based upon the following terms: an annual base rent not to exceed $273,600 per year, and the second five-year period not to exceed $295,200 per year. Item B. Medgar Evers College Five-Year Lease Renewal. To authorize the general counsel to execute a five-year lease renewal for approximately 7,000 rentable square feet of space at 1665 Bedford Avenue in Brooklyn, New York, on behalf of Medgar Evers. The college has been a tenant since mid-2002, and the current lease expires on August 31st, 2012. The building houses a bookstore and the Admission Service Center. The university and the landlord have agreed to renew the lease for a new five-year period at an annual rental not to exceed $140,000 per rentable square feet. The landlord will continue to be responsible for real estate taxes, exterior structural and roof and interior repairs, and the university will be responsible for the cleaning. Item C. Hostos Community College Master Plan Amendment. To approve an amendment to the Hostos Community College Master Plan, originally approved in 1984 by the CUNY Board of Trustees, the amendment proposes strategies to address the anticipated growth at the college and the need to modernize facilities for instructional space and student support services. The Hostos Community College campus, located on a 5.8-acre campus in the South Bronx, has been expanding to the west along Walton Avenue with the building of the Savoy Building at 149th Street, conversion of an old garage at 146th Street, and two trailer sites in the same area utilized by the Campus Facilities Department and the Hostos Immigration Center. The most recent acquisition for the campus is 135 East 144th Street, the carpet building, at the corner of East 144th Street and Walton Avenue. These facilities provide a total of 348,029 net assignable square feet. Fall 2009 shows an enrollment of 4,488 full-time equivalent students. Hostos Community College has a current space need of 470,177 net assignable square feet, when benchmarked against similar community colleges. The current conditions represent a deficit of 122,148 net square feet. This master plan amendment is based on a projected 2020 college enrollment of 6,528 full-time enrollees, requiring a total of 540,390 net assignable square feet, a projected deficit of 192,361 square feet. The master plan amendment updates and revises the findings presented in the 1984 master plan and calls for new construction and the renovation of existing facilities to meet the space need. The City University Construction Fund Board of Trustees approved the selection of the design firm of Mitchell Gorgola Architects on October 22nd, 2008. Item D. Hunter College Science and Health Professions Project. To authorize CUNY to undertake a public-private project with Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center for the acquisition of vacant land at 525 East 73rd Street, and to develop with the Memorial Sloan-Kettering Council Center, the Hunter College Science and Health Professions building on its portion of the property. CUNY and Memorial Sloan will acquire and jointly develop the 73rd Street property currently owned by the City of New York. The joint development at 73rd Street property will include the Hunter College Science Building, a new 300,000-square-foot building to serve Hunter's School of Nursing and Health Professions and upper-level science classes, and a new 700,000-square-foot outpatient cancer center for Memorial Sloan-Kettering. Currently, Hunter's health services and nursing programs are located on the Hunter Brookdale Campus at East 25th Street and First Avenue. CUNY's contribution to the acquisition of the 73rd Street property will be a portion of the Brookdale Campus, which will be transferred to the city. As a result, the programs at Brookdale will need to be temporarily relocated until the Hunter College Science Building is completed. Land use approvals for the 73rd Street property are expected to be complete by the fall of 2013. CUNY has identified approximately 85,000 square feet of space that can be renovated at LaGuardia Community College's Center III building to house the Brookdale programs temporarily. When the Brookdale programs vacate the Center III space to move to the Hunter College Science Building, the space will be turned over to LaGuardia Community College for its use. The Center III renovation will be developed in accordance with LaGuardia Community College's master plan. Construction of the temporary space at LaGuardia Center III is anticipated to be complete by the fall of 2015. Combined, these spaces are estimated, estimated to cost approximately $54 million of existing state-appropriated funds. The Hunter College Science Building is estimated to cost $450 million in state-appropriated funds and is anticipated to be complete by fall 2019. E. Hunter College-Wilde Cornell Medical College Agreement. To authorize, on behalf of Hunter College, a public-private project with Wilde Cornell Medical College for the acquisition of a full research floor at the new eighteen-story medical research facility being constructed by Wilde Cornell at 413 East 69th Street. CUNY intends to purchase, on behalf of Hunter College, the Hunter Research Floor, a condominium unit consisting of the fourth floor of the new eighteen-story Wilde Cornell Research Building. The Wilde Cornell Research Building is scheduled to be completed for spring 2014 occupancy. As the owner of the, of a floor at the Cornell, at the Cornell Research Building, Hunter College will enjoy joint use of vivarium, conference rooms, lounges, and other common areas. It is anticipated the researchers from Hunter College, who utilize the facility, will generate a substantial number of federal and other grants in support of the operation. The above agreements will formalize the respective roles of the Cornell Center and CUNY with respect to the acquisition and operation of the research building, which will be managed by an affiliate of Wilde Cornell. The purchase price of $65 million is supported by two appraisals performed at CUNY's request. The New York State Dormitory Authority will finance the purchase cost through a state appropriation, and the project is subject to approval by the New York State Attorney General and New York State Controller. On June 27th, 2011, calendar number item B8, the board authorized CUNY to enter into a letter of intent for the project, and that letter of intent was executed on October 4th, 2011. Item F. Medgar Evers College Amendment to Pool Renovation on Carroll Street, on the Carroll Street side. To authorize the amendment of the resolution adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on April 27th, 2009, calendar number B6, to execute a contract on behalf of Medgar Evers College to renovate the pool facility and the Carroll Street building. The amendment will increase the authorized amount for construction and management services from $2.2 million to $3.3 million. The increased amount is necessary to cover the modifications to electrical, mechanical, and gutter systems, and modify pool area and women's locker rooms to comply with ADA guidelines. The fund, on behalf of the City University of New York, reconstructed the existing pool in the Carroll Street building. Due to unforeseen conditions, modifications to the mechanical, electrical, and pool gutter systems were required during construction. The college requested an increase in scope to modify the pool area and women's locker room in order to comply with ADA guidelines, and as a result of these changes, an increase of design, construction, and management fees is needed. Item G. Queens College Resolution for Campus-Wide Fire Alarm Project Phase One. To authorize a purchase order for the services to design, purchase, and install fire alarm systems in the Clapper Hall Science Building and Music Building, including central monitoring station at Queens College. Existing fire alarm systems in these buildings are not in compliance with current New York City Building and Fire Codes and are not functional. In order to use Clapper Hall Science Building and the Music Building with required safe, fire safety, the fire alarm system in these buildings must be replaced immediately. The total cost of all purchases shall be chargeable to the State Capitol Construction Fund for an amount not to exceed $6 million. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Thank you very much. I'll second those items. Are there questions on any of them? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs, trustee Kathleen Basili.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has three items for the board's approval. The committee met on June 4th, 2012, and approved calendar items 7A, 7B, and let me repeat them for you. Calendar item 7A, LaGuardia Community College. Student Activity Fee Increase. This resolution increases the student activity fee... This resolution increases the student activity fee paid by students at LaGuardia Community College by $12 for full-time students from $55.85 to $67.85, and by $6 for part-time students from $20.85 to $26.85 to establish an intercollegiate athletics program at the college. This new fee will be allocated by the college association. A referendum was held at the college in which the vote was 809 in favor and 390 opposed, with 7.7 percent of the eligible students voting in the referendum. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report on calendar item seven A.
I'll second that motion. Are there questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Calendar item seven B, City College. Student Activity Fee Undergraduate Students. The student activity schedule represents an increase of $15 for full-time undergraduate students, $7.50 for part-time undergraduate students, and a $4 increase in the undergraduate summer session student activity fee. This will increase the fee from $49.35 to $64.35 for full-time students, from $33.35 to $40.85 for part-time students, and $8 to $12 for summer session. This fee will increase the earmarking to Student Faculty Committee on Intercollegiate Athletics. A student activity fee referendum was held at the college in which the vote was 1,632 in favor and 1,003 opposed to the increase. City College should be commended for obtaining a 20 percent participation rate on this referendum. This is the first increase in the student activity fee since 1996. The earmarking for athletics has remained unchanged since 1985. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item seven B.
I'll second that motion. Are there questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
And finally, calendar item seven C, the City University of New York Amendments to the Policy on Payment of Stipends to Student Leaders. I wish to present an additional item that has come to our attention, which we would ask the board to consider at this time in the best interest of the university. This resolution is included on the revised calendar, copies of which are around the table. This resolution amends the board policy on payment of stipends to student leaders. In accordance with the board policy, the chancellor has reviewed the schedule of stipend payments since stipends were last increased in July 2004. The proposed revisions increase the maximum allowable stipends by 11.45 percent on July 1, 2012, and by 11.45 percent on July 1, 2013. In accordance with the 22.9 percent increase in the Consumer Price Index, known as the CPI, for all urban consumers in New York City and northern New Jersey from July 2004 through May 2012, by increasing the cap over a two-year period, the USS and the college associations will have a better opportunity to budget for these increases, should they choose to even do so. The implementation of the increase in the amounts to be paid to student leaders shall be determined by the chancellor. I would now like to ask...
I'll second that. Are there questions on the student stipends?
I'm going to have to raise all the faculty salaries as a result of...
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Mr. Chairman, I have two information items I would like to share with the board at this time. I would personally like to thank Vice President for Student Affairs Ramona Brown and her staff at the College of Staten Island for the terrific job they did in helping me to coordinate a very successful first initiative in showcasing CSI honors students with a visit to the office of the New York State Controller, Thomas Denopoli, last week. Controller Denopoli was very gracious and spent over an hour with the students who were in awe of this experience, which for most I found represented the first time they would meet any high-ranking official. We are now in collaboration with the controller's office to schedule students from Baruch College for next semester. And in addition, I would like to acknowledge the CUNY Coalition of Students with Disabilities for their continuing participation in the 107th Annual AKC Staten Island Kennel Dog Show, which was held at the College of Staten Island this past weekend. Their support was well appreciated by the many exhibitors as well as the show dogs. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to give just notice of a non-action item that the Executive Committee on May 21, 2012, accepted a proposal of the chancellor that William J. Fritz be appointed interim president of the College of Staten Island for a period of up to two years as the college completes the academic and administrative initiatives that have been commenced under the leadership of President Morales. That was -- that item is noticed on page 39 of your board book. Before we go into executive session, that concludes our public business. I want to wish everyone a happy and productive summer, and we look forward to seeing you early in the fall. We'll now go into executive session.